Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the Chicago Unified School District Board of Education Special Meeting for June 25th, 2025. I appreciate your patience. We're starting a little few months behind schedule, but we will move right along. The first item is just to note that the board did take some action and closed session. On that note, the board unanimously by a vote of three to zero with two members not present approve resolution number one six ninety dash two five to initiate a termination process for one certificated employee. The board give direction to legal counsel to continue discussions with employees counsel for a certificate for a separate certificated employee business as a matter. And with that, would please join me in the flag. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item four is the consent calendar. Do we have anyone on the board who wishes to pull an item from consent for the discussion? I see none. Is there, we will not listen to public comment on consent items. I do believe we have one seeker listed, or item on the consent calendar, Amanda Travis. Hello.
Hello.
So just in case you don't know, you have three minutes to figure out your item. We'll give you a notice when there's about thirty seconds left. Okay?
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Do I speak here or?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Travis. I am a parent of a children, a child that attends Chico Junior High. And she is going through a little rough patch and unfortunately she had did some things that she is very, very apologetic for. And she is currently seeking therapy and anger management to create, to undo her wrong behaviors that that occurred at her school. Unfortunately, she done what she did and she's really sympathetic of her situation. And moving forward, she is learning to do things the right way despite of her disabilities that's that she has, learning disability and other things. So I will, I apologize.
Good afternoon.
But I would like for the board to reconsider, you know, allowing her to attend the school that she's registered to. You know, she, she doesn't do well with change. So we rooting her yet again will really like start her all over. The teachers in the staff loves her very much. They seen her growth from day one. You know, she's only in sixth grade. So they seen, seen her growth from day one and they really like really love her and they, they learning to work with her. So she's willing to change. She noticed that she has done wrong and we are currently working with her doctor and, and, and other behavior therapists and anger management to create self, so this will not happen again. So I would like for the board to consider her to allow her to go to her So I would like for the board to consider her, to allow her to go to her school that she, she is currently enrolled in. So please consider, reconsider her to allow her to stay in the school that she's enrolled in. And the staff and principal is allowing her to continue to go there as well. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. I appreciate, it's not always easy to come to these and to advocate for your people. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
I believe, I think you've already gone over the appeals process.
Um, yes.
Okay, awesome. So we'll be looking at that and do a comment with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, can't, it's on your end. Yeah, we only can't comment if it's from the floor. Anyhow, so yeah, for this process for that, we'll, we'll work through it.
Absolutely.
With that, I didn't see any other items that the board needed to discuss from the consent calendar. So I'm going to ask for a motion on the consent calendar.
Motion approval?
We have a motion from number Hayes and a second from Vice President Conkin to pass the consent calendar as is. Any discussion? Okay. In that case, we're going to do a roll call vote on left, right. Go ahead. Landevi?
Hayes, aye. Robinson, aye.
It's unanimous four zero. Give it a gavel. We're done? No, thank you. I apologize. Okay, let's move on to the board workshop topic of the day, which is the local control accountability plan.
Right, so last week, we had a public hearing for our local control accountability plan. And it's a little bit of a switch that as we typically have workshops that have a lengthier presentation with them and lots of information shared with you. Questions you can ask that this person can always ask. However, last week, just in how the LCAP comes about during the public hearing is when we share a lot of the information. There was a slideshow, there was some information that Tim walked through the board with. So that's, I just want to point that out to our new board members. That's a little bit different than how we would normally do a workshop. So with that, we are here to ask for your consideration for approval for the LCAP for 2025 into 2026. This is a plan that comes to all districts in our state and has to be board approved. It is a public plan. It is shared. It's very transparent. It's been on our website as draft form since June 11th through today. Asking for any, any input that public has. We have received none, but if we did, we would reach out to the person sending the questions, answer those questions as of that. Today, right now, we have not. We do have, in fact, Tim will go through this in a little bit. It's very common for us to bring this in June. We work with our county lead, Jeanette Spencer, throughout this time as well. She is, she works directly with the State Board of Education. So she knows all of the pieces that we have to have in the LCAP. And it is lengthy. I have a hard copy here. You've seen it. You know, it is well over 130 pages. So we appreciate Jeanette's guidance with, with her assistance. So she, in the timing of June typically will reach out to us with, look at our draft and say, hey, Tim and Tina, be sure you include this piece or hey, don't forget that. So like I mentioned, Tim will go through those edits, like we call them. We have a very collaborative relationship with her. She really makes sure we understand the reason behind it. She sticks very closely to the state template because after our local improvement, local approve.
Approval.
Approval, thank you. It goes to county level and then it will go to state. So that's a little background. We also, just for you all to know, there's quite a lengthy process that we go through to get to this point for, for you to look at this. We have talked with a lot of our families throughout the year. We've talked to a lot of our students, as Tim mentioned last week. We have a lot of input in there and we value that. If we can't make changes currently, that is documented and it is in there for us and we don't lose track of that. We look at this document not as a whole, but in pieces quite often. And we do look for different funding that comes through to see if we can augment LCAP funding with some other funding to get some services that we've had feedback on for kids. I think Tim mentioned counseling is an example of that. Last, throughout the years, we've had the LCAP. But we work close with our fiscal department, Sharice Rommel in particular. We rely on her to give us very accurate accounts of the money going into this and make sure we are leveraging that money with, with actions for students the best that we can. And I think we've done a pretty good job with a lot of services and actions for kids with the money in this account. So we appreciate her. We've had people helping us write at Michelle Bunch, Chase Chevalier, Tim's crew for data. If you look through there, especially Level One, there's quite a bit of data that the metrics are what we call them and they give snapshots at time of where our students are. And then of course, we have the actions that go ahead with those metrics and they all tie to our goal. So it's a, it's a circle. It's an evaluative process and we never miss stuff with LCAP. Tim, want to add anything before you go through the edits?
Um, no, no.
Any questions on, on anything initially before you go through the edits?
No, thank you. Okay, so as Tina said, there's a lot of back and forth in June with county or May and June with the county, including after the, the public hearing. And so since we brought this forth to you last week, we have made some changes. And the changes are not changing any, what we're doing or how much we're spending. So the actions and the costs have not changed. Really what these are is, for the most part, is technical pieces that the county needs to see that are required by state law that, and there's a lot of them. So there's always this back and forth. And also data that comes in right at the end of the year. And we want to make sure that we are providing the most up-to-date data to you and to show the public in our plan. And so that data that comes in at the end of the year, we need to add usually post-public hearing. The document that's up on the screen right now will show you the sections in bold, sections of the LCAP where changes were made. And the, the changes are just listed below. You'll see, you know, added language, more information, those types of, that type of wording. That means that the county told us that we needed to add something or change something. And then we list, do list out the data that that was added. So are there any questions on the revisions?
Would all appropriate. Thank you.
Just have any questions for us before we hand it over to the board?
Less questions. I just want the board to know that I intend to add an item. I didn't get it on this agenda and I apologize. But I would like to, especially as we move forward with the new support agenda, I think it's a good time to add a portion to our agenda for regular meetings where we always just look at the goals. I want to see like a one sheet of just, hey, here's our three goals. Here's the metrics we improved in the LCAP. And every month, we can just have a real quick as part of the superintendent report with update on if anything changed and what, how the actions have worked so far. So we can get them much, much natural. We can really use this as a guiding document to make sure we're aware of what's going on and it's working and what isn't in our system. So, I'll have discussion about that one second. I'm going to get it, but I'd like. Any other questions for staff? Okay. The action before us then is to go ahead and choose whether to approve the 2025-26 LCAP.
I would add one addition with the edits from the.
With edits, yes, okay. Very good. In that case, do we have a motion to approve 2025-26 LCAP draft with the edit as provided here?
Mr. President, I so move.
Sounds good.
All right, we have a motion from Member Robinson, a second from Vice President Conkin by a hair. Is there any more discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's four zero unanimous. Thank you very much. I know it takes a lot of your time, Seth. Again, oh, you're right. No, that's a good point. I think I just skipped out on asking if there was public comment on this one. Of course, last week was the public hearing for this, but if anyone does wish to make a comment on the LCAP this time, please make it over here. That's what we call, like I said, a little off the game today. Seeing as there is none though, we will close that, that matter and move on to discussion actions calendar. Item six, point one, point one is an informational item regarding the California Schools Dashboard Local Indicators Plan.
Yeah, you're very familiar with the California State Dashboard. That's been featured in, you know, numerous board meetings really over the spring. The, the metrics that we're used to looking on that dashboard are state metrics. Those are language arts, math, math science, et cetera. The, in addition to the state metrics, the state asks districts, requires districts to basically evaluate themselves on progress towards other priorities in the local controlled funding formula. So this, this document here, the local indicators document, addresses a number of priorities. This is shown on the dashboard in a kind of a limited fashion. And, and really by, regardless of how we rank ourselves and what we report, the fact that we're doing this evaluation satisfies the state requirement as meeting the standard. Okay? So what, the makeup of these local indicators is around parent and family communication, partnerships, implementation of the state standards. And we look at curriculum purchases, professional development in subject areas across the board. Another feature of the local indicators is our evaluation of student access to a broad range of courses. So that's added. That's on the last one, priority seven. And so really this is an exercise for ed, ed services each year. Kind of, kind of really take a look at, you know, how, how are we doing with, with standards implementation? That's a big topic of conversation even not regarding the local indicators as far as curriculum and professional development. And so, and also in addition, we kind of evaluate our, our efforts of reaching out to the public, particularly by families. Is there any questions regarding these?
So I, I am curious about when you're doing the ratings. So for, on, on number five, so identifying the professional learning needs of groups of teachers or staff as a whole. So how do you, how do you go about, you know, making sure that, that those are, you know, kind of a ground, a ground swell up rather than add them down?
Consultation with our teacher leaders primarily. Our MTSS leads are crucial in steering our professional development. That's primarily, but we're, you know, we're looking at data right now to, that will influence our professional development.
So you can LCAP feedback from.
Right, LCAP feedback, yep.
Family members and, and even students.
Well, this is teacher focused, like identifying the professional learning needs of individual teachers.
Yeah.
Like I want to make sure the individual teachers are, are being asked. It's, it's always frustrating as a teacher to, to be told, we're going to do this training. And it's like, well, that's, that's great. And the training may have value, but it's not the training that I particularly need, you know?
With the MTSS person on each site, they really, our liaison and the staff knows them well to remember their own site, colleague. So there are lots of discussion pieces that not only in staff days, but also I'm sure they just conversations on campus. So we have, and we, we provide feedback to people as well after the staff development days. Was this appropriate? Was this something you wanted? What else would you like? So we do often, I can, I can say, we get feedback from teachers saying, those are things that we have talked about. Those are things that are applicable to my role in my classroom. So it, it has seemingly been positive for, for quite a while now.
Yeah, and the, the survey questions that teachers use to evaluate the PD is really centered on, is this something that is applicable in my classroom? Is it useful?
Am I going to use it tomorrow? Thank you. Good question.
And there's no action needed on this? This is the information all we have?
Yep, just give everybody some think time. See if they need to, if any of those bullets that we want to ask about. But it looks like maybe there isn't. Are you satisfied with that? All right. In that case, is there any public comment on this item? I do not see it. And so since this is informational, no action is required. We are going to go ahead and move on to item six two one, Business Services. This is a bid approval for the courtyard payment project.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Thank you for having me here this evening. We received one bid today for the corporation yard payment project. And that was from R and R Horn, your local company. The base bid, which is the most significant portion that we need paid, came in at $939,000. An additional price was requested for the remainder of the yard that is unpaid, not as essential as the bus area. And that was an additional $288,000. So if you add those two numbers together, you come up with 1.2 million. That puts us over budget to do both areas and pay the engineering fees that you've already included in the past. They were $58,000. What I'm asking for you to agree to this evening is to proceed with R and R Horn as our lowest responsive bidder, but to be able to negotiate with them on that second portion and possibly, you know, get pricing down with them as long as we stay within, below the 1.1 budget that we have.
Yeah, the $900,000 surprise me. Is that in line with, you know, industry averages for this kind of work?
Yeah, we had anticipated 1.1.
The whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I kind of jumped in and then wrote up questions for, purely about this one, right? Please.
Truly on the way in the courtyard, there's a couple of really big potholes on the outside of the gate.
Oh.
I did them in.
Well, that's the city, not the courtyard, not the district.
Deals some of there.
Maybe we could get them to accidentally spill a little bit in there on the way by. Probably so.
It's only about 15 feet from the gate, but they're huge.
Yeah, that area takes an enormous amount of impact.
Yeah.
You know, all the buses coming through every day, multiple times.
So what you're saying is that R and R Horn came in basically $100,000 over? Is that?
Well, our total budget is 1.1.
The total, one, okay, with the R and R 58, yeah, okay.
And we, we should have a pot, a pot of money for contingency because it's.
Cause there always is.
Right, there's always something. But if you would approve R and R Horn as a contractor, I've already spoken with them about being over budget. They do have some pretty significant cost savings ideas, but this being a hard day of, you know, they don't get to talk about those with us prior to the bid opening. But I feel that we can. But I feel that we can do more than just the base bid area. If our engineer agrees to some of their cost saving measures, we may be able to do the whole thing within our budget.
And let's hope so. So I...
So I guess my question would be, do you recommend that we approve just the base area with room to negotiate the rest?
Well, since I'm not going to be seeing you until July again, I, what I want you to approve is the overall project cost of not to exceed 1.1 and approving R&amp;R Horn as the contractor.
Okay, that's interesting. Yeah, all right. Is there any public comment on this one? R&amp;R snuck in. In that case, all right, in that case, is there a motion on item six two one?
I motion that the board approve up to $1.1 million, which is our budget for R&amp;R Horn to the paving at the district festivals, right?
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Member Hayes and a second by Member Lando. Any further debate? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Four zero unanimous. Thank you very much. Item six two two is a bid approval for site work, for temporary portable housing P and D regarding building B reconstruction.
Right, so last week I mentioned to you that we had to pull this item because we needed more time. We did receive bids for this project yesterday based on well put together plans by the architectural firm and their consultants. There were three bidders. They were United Building Contractors, R&amp;R Horn, and J Co Engineering. They ranged from the highest at $703,000, medium at $632,000, and the lowest responsive bidder was United Building Contractors for $457,000. So it is our recommendation that we move forward with the lowest responsive bidder of UBC for $457,000. I want to note that of these contractors, UBC does a lot of portable buildings, a lot of site work for portables. So it's definitely in their wheelhouse, maybe more than the other two companies that do it.
Fair enough. Are there any technical questions for staff regarding this item?
Not a technical one, but I assume that because it's in their wheelhouse, that may be, that may be why they're able to dig at a lower rate because they were just so familiar with doing that sort of work.
They have a really good understanding of what they need to do.
Yeah, I was very curious about, I'm sure it's germane to ask which, which bidders or which other ones. Given that, any does have questions for Julie?
We've used them before.
Okay.
Yes. They're currently working at Little Chief Company and the restroom project. But they haven't done any projects for portable rooms.
We haven't needed one.
Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding item six two two?
I move approval of six two two.
All right, we have a motion from Member Robinson and a second from Vice President Conken. Any debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is four zero unanimous. Thank you. All right, and we're on to the really fun stuff. We are, item six two three is the approval of the 25-26 original budget.
Yes, so much like Tina spoke to the LCAP, we did have a public hearing on the original budget seven days ago, a week ago. We did not receive any public comment on the budget. So I'm bringing forward to you this evening the same budget that was presented on last Wednesday. We can, with no changes at this point. I guess a note would be, I did see today that the head of the Senate and head of the Assembly did strike a deal with the governor related to a budget deal pending kind of an amendment or supplemental component related to housing that's due by June 30, by Monday. So assuming that goes through, I guess they had a deal. So I don't have any specifics specifically related to K-12 education that would impact the budget. Like I said last week, I will come back at a future board meeting, most likely August, with when that deal is done, how does it impact K-12, but more important, how does it impact J and U five in the practical life, such as how we...
Okay, I'm assuming no major changes after that disaffirmative already present.
So there aren't, there aren't currently any trailer bills that you're expecting as well?
There will certainly be trailer bills once there's a venue. And those are just the, but that's the minutia that we don't have this evening to be able to make any changes to our budget parameters.
All right. Any further questions for staff? Is there any public comment regarding the 25-26 budget? Seeing none, we have a motion associated with item six two three.
I motion the board accept the 25-26 budget.
I'll second that.
Very good. A motion by Member Hayes, a second by Member Robinson. Any further debate or discussion on board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board not unanimous. Thank you very much. Of course, we look forward to seeing the, what actually comes out of that deal.
Yes.
All right, we are on to item six two four, which is the reserved exposure regarding the 25-26 budget.
Yes, so we also held a public hearing related to our reserve exposure last week on June 18th, and no public comment was received. Additionally, the board did take action to change the additional reserve threshold that we set aside locally and with an effective date of July 1. So this document that's in your board agenda is the exact same one from a week ago. I'm looking forward to listening.
Very good, thank you. So again, conversation just a week ago. Anybody have any new questions for staff regarding the reserve? Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I motion approval of the reserves disclosure.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I think that we got it pointed. So we have a motion by Member Hayes and a second by President Conken. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board not unanimous.
I can't hold.
Yep. And it just says no, as you said, that's to take effect July 1st. Very good. So our board policy will change on that date. Tuesday? Item six point two point five is a discussion action item regarding the education protection account.
So yes, much similar to the other two. Public hearing last week, no public comment was received related to the education protection account. Again, these are not necessarily new dollars. They're just dollars that come in, a different mechanism, to the school districts and we spend them exclusively and 100% on teacher salaries. Basically, the stipulations say that they can't spend on the district's salaries, so we fall in compliance with probably teacher salaries.
So just out of curiosity, they're officially in the unrestricted side.
Absolutely.
But because of the way they come in, we track them separately and only use them for teacher salaries.
Correct, because of reporting requirements, yes.
Very good, okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? Any public comment? Okay, is there a motion associated with six point two point five?
I'll motion approval of the education protection account.
I will second that, all right. We have a motion by Member Hayes, a second by Member Lando. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous by vote of four to zero. I believe that takes us on to item six point three point one. This is an action item regarding the approval of an amended employment agreement with our deputy superintendent. This is an item that comes up, I believe, every year. Keep you on, we attempt to keep you on a rolling three-year employment deal, yes?
Exactly correct. So in front of you is the amendment to my contract that would extend for another year, pushing it out to June 30, 2028. And it would be going forward, assuming the board approves with the annual piece to, like you said, to continue a three-year rolling agreement with the board. And that's the only amendment that is going forward.
Got the wrong effect here. Yes, I did. I opened the EPA, I found like...
That looks a little different.
I like it, but we're not paying you $23 million. You can retire too, all right? Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this one? No?
You have questions or comments?
Yes.
Comment is, "Thank you, Jaclyn, for being here. It's a pleasure to reunite."
It is, and honestly, the continuity as we turn into the new superintendent will be, it'll be nice to have an official deputy superintendent. That said, is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Is there a motion?
I motion approval.
I'll second that.
On fire today.
I'm just, I keep waiting.
Yeah, all right.
I look around.
A motion by Member Hayes and a second by Member Robinson. Is there any further discussion or debate? Like I, like I was already said, we look forward to continually working with you. It's been good so far, and you can tweet. That's it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous by vote of four to nothing, thank you. There are no board member requests to adjourn items on this one. I mean, I already brought something up last time. Do you still want to bring that up for the next regular meeting?
It's for the November meeting. I'm still working on it.
Very good, thank you.
I should have it to staff by Monday.
Okay, looking forward to seeing it.
And then I was, I actually talked to Kelly about maybe possibly wording something for a future meeting as well. And maybe we can talk about that in the next few days.
Thank you, Pat.
I know, I know.
Thursday, Friday, Monday.
You know what I'm talking about, yes?
I do.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right, that said, there are no formal board member requests to adjourn items today. So with that, I will see if there are any motions to adjourn.
Well, come on, Rebecca.
I'll second that. We have a motion from Vice President Conken, a second from Lando. All those in favor adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Woo-hoo, we completed it all!